Please join me in the pledge. The pledge alleges-
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Can you take the roll, please?
Trustee Spurling here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum president today. Move on to item four, public participation. This is a two-minute opportunity from any member of the audience to address the board. Is there anybody interested this evening? Shár. Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, which is items for discussion in the community development quarterly report. With that, I will turn it over to Jamie for her presentation.
Thank you. If you, you probably don't recall this, but one of the department goals this year is we had talked about how we wanted to simplify, make our reporting to the community more readable and a little bit more targeted towards the public versus just the sheets that you see coming out. We are still going to do those because we've done those for the past 10, 11 years, and so the data is all collected very similarly, and it provides some really good historical analysis. So we still are doing that, but have decided we're going to kind of do something a little bit more tailored that provided us a little more flexibility in how we report on a quarterly basis. So the first quarter's report is in your packet, and it covers May, June, and July of this year. So as you can see, the first page is more of sort of an article on the TIF of what's going on in the community. And then the second page really starts to get into the building activity that's going on. And I'm just gonna, hopefully you had a chance to read it, but I'm just gonna pick out the things that I think were the highlights or in the report and kind of go over those very briefly. So, building permit activity, you can see July's permits were well above last year July and 2011's July, but that May and June were actually below previous years. And that July, we're attributing the pickup in permits a lot to roofing. There were over 25 roofing permits that were issued. But this was just interesting. Mike completed 86 inspections in July in 16 workdays, so just over five inspections a day in addition to the review and issuance of all 86 permits. So that can just kind of give you a little bit of an idea of workload for him and going on in the department. Also in this report, I'm going to be tracking and reporting on our building permit revenue. So as you can see, the blue line is the budget. The green line is what we had anticipated getting so far in quarter one, and the red line is what we actually received. And there's a note here that the Q1 actual is well below the 50,000 because we had anticipated getting the Sam's Club permit this month, which we haven't, didn't receive in July, but will be receiving very shortly, and so it should be accounted for in August. So we're actually, you know, not $25,000 below our projections. The code enforcement page, this month actually highlights Laura Roustevore, who has received the National Code Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. She'll be the first Illinois recipient, as well as the first women recipient in the International Code Council's history, so it's a very prestigious award. Code enforcement violations, as you can see, these are, have been kind of trending up. This, I think, goes in line with us being out there, being more proactive. But a 30% increase in activity over first quarter of last year. There's also stats in there on vacant homes. The third page is just more of some interesting development updates and a continuation of our comprehensive plan that we have going on. Again, for somebody who might not have been involved and wouldn't have known about Butterball or some of the business boost activities, the board should, should know most of that information already. And then the last page is my favorite because I got to look at sort of what's going on on the website. And what's interesting is I looked at community development website hits in several categories, and we're basically up about 130 visits from last quarter. And I think the thing I found the most interesting was that the visits to our permit page, 739 total visits, this is unique visits, so new computers, so eight visits to that page per day, and page views was even more impressive for the permit. So this kind of just, I think, proved some points in terms of, you know, the people are using the website and to which degree they are. And then with request tracker, just looking at garbage, lawn weeds, property maintenance, and inoperable vehicles, you can see it's up from 31 of the first quarter of 2012. So more people, the word's getting out, they are using the website, we are responding. And some of those stats further go over the time reporting to close requests and how many are coming in in each category. This is available on our website. We're also planning on doing, it's on the community development homepage, we're also planning on doing several Facebook posts that just outline that it's now available for our residents to see. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions to Jamie?
What's the projected, for the permit for Sam's Club?
I would have to check on the exact figure, but I believe it's-
5,000, 20,000?
26,000 for the building fee, and that doesn't include water tap-ons and water fees, which is about double that, or adds to that.
But that's not part of this?
No, it's in a different fund.
Okay.
So I'm allowed to ask questions, or are you afraid that that's going to sprue into additional questions?
You can ask questions, I'm not sure I will know the answer, but-
Okay.
Don't allow it to spawn a lot of control, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You don't have any questions?
No.
I do have one, one question. This request tracker, and this might be more for Public Works, but does this help to streamline the process at all, or does it just come in as an email and then you gotta make a work order in Public Works?
We worked with the developer of Pub Works to build a patch, basically, that takes the data from request tracker and converts it and downloads it into Pub Works records, so it helps us quite a bit. So it transfers them automatically, and they show up as Pub Works requests, which, for those of you who aren't familiar with Pub Works, that's the data management program that we've been using in Public Works for several years now. So they're slightly different formats, so again, the Pub Works people were able to build that for us, and it's worked pretty well.
Just to clarify, that's for Public Works-related requests?
Yeah, so if it comes in as labeled Public Works, or they select Public Works, it'll get transferred over automatically?
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to item B, which is the Route 30 improvements from Route 47 to the bridge. And there's a presentation and an attachment, and I'll turn this over to Engineer Wallers.
Thank you. Recall that, thanks, the state has undertaken a Phase One study for the development of Route 30 from Route 47 to basically the interchange at 31. That process is, you know, more or less a preliminary engineering stage where they identify all the environmental limitations, drainage problems, accident data, they go through all of the traffic projections into the future, and then try to determine what's going to be the best road cross-section, what the intersections are going to look like, what level of drainage improvements need to be installed, what problems may exist in the corridor. The process also includes a interactive process by which the citizens can participate in the program, and it's called the Community Advisory Group, and that has been going on for several months. In July, July 25th, they had, I think, the second Community Advisory Group meeting. Representatives of the village and our firm were in attendance, and they went through a lot of the basic information that I just illustrated, or just highlighted, but the most important piece of information was their proposed cross-section for the corridor, and that gave us a little bit of pause to, that we wanted to discuss that in more detail with the village board. Staff believes that this may be a little bit of a reach for a section, and in order to illustrate it, what we did is we took the proposed section that the state is contemplating, it's basically 180 to 200-foot wide right-of-way take with a section in between. So the state section is shown above here, and then the white line on the top would be the 10-foot bike path, and then the, the smaller white line here is the 5-foot sidewalk. So that kind of brackets the improvements. They classify this as a rural section. There's a 50-foot area in the center median here that is, is basically grass or landscape. The, the thing that we don't like about it, and you can see it pretty well here, this is a section of the Cambridge, so Foxmore, and Lakewood Creek West development area. And you'll see that we have landscaping along here that is going to be, get obliterated with that cross-section. So, you know, the village took care to, to provide a pretty substantial corridor through the area, so we have 50-foot landscape buffers on either side of about 120-foot right-of-way. So there's enough space to fit the 200-foot take in there, but we don't think it's a really good use of land because we, they would tear out our landscaping buffers that have been constructed with all the landscaping that's been beautifully assembled, and, and then put basically a center strip of grass, which is not really that usable for us. So that's a concern. So what we are suggesting that we propose back to them is a more compact cross-section, still 120-foot section, but similar to what is being proposed on US Route 30 now from Route 34 to Albright, and that's basically an urban, what we would call an urban section with a fairly narrow center median, but also providing for the 10-foot bike path and the 5-foot sidewalk, and, you know, the same four lanes, but curb and gutter section so that we can fit it into a little more compact area. And as you can see then, you know, we keep our landscape buffers intact if we go with that section. So staff's recommendation is that we send a note back to the state for asking them to consider a more urban section for our, our corridor going forward. This is just one snapshot, but this, you know, section would extend, again, from the interchange at 31 all the way out to 47, and while I think you can say now we have some, some rural area west of Fairfield and Foxmore, those are certainly planned to be developed at some time, and we would think the character would be similar to what we have now. So we don't really think that, you know, long, and this, I don't think this improvement is going to take place for a number of years, so we're looking into the future here. So we feel like the urban section is a better fit for the community and for the, you know, the amenities that we already have in place. So we were wanting to get some discussion with the board and determine if you would agree with that position, and if so, then we would make contact with the state.
Excellent. What would be the reason that they want such a wide berth?
I'm not sure. They felt like that this was a more appropriate section for-
Safety issue because of crossing?
Well, I don't, I don't think that it can be any more safe because we're already, we have, this section is exactly what they're building on, on 30 already, so it's a safe section. I, I don't, I'm not sure what their compelling reason is to go to a rural section.
It'd take you longer to get across to-
Well, that's, there's a number of concerns, and, and I articulated all of them, but one of the other concerns, you know, we're hoping to have some accurate pedestrian crossings in this section, and so now if we have to traverse that 180 or 200-foot corridor as opposed to a little more compact, that adds a little bit of time and, you know, interrupts traffic, but is also not quite as safe. So that's another concern that we have. You know, there's just a number of things that we feel like the urban section's just a better fit for, you know, for our community.
Has there been discussion about a walking bridge?
That's another potential, and again, if you had the wider right-of-way, that's a lot, a lot longer span that you would have to, to take into account. And I think that the 200-foot section, as you go to the east, is going to be a little problematic in certain locations because there's going to be a lot more land that'll have to be taken, because we, you know, that was pre, you know, pre-developed or along, you know, wasn't planned as well as the, the far west area, the far west corridor. So, you know, that's going to cost the state more money to build the highway as well, and I'm not sure that money is, is well spent acquiring land, so.
Another thought as well, we have some commercial zoning in the area of Dixon Road and Bertram Road, and this additional taking might interfere with our economic development plans as well.
Yeah, I, I think generally it, it's, it eliminates our ability to provide, I think, designed landscape buffers, really, and because they'll be caught up in, in the state's 200-foot wide swath, which doesn't leave a lot of room for landscaping at the perimeter. There's room in the middle, but that, I don't think really serves us too well. The other concern that we have is we have some utilities along the corridor, some water main and our own easements, some water main and by permit, and really, we don't see the need to, to hopefully have to relocate our utilities as well, so.
And this happens, I mean, this process, everybody goes through this at some point, but the village was very proactive in providing those landscape buffers along Route 30. Now, let's assume that we weren't doing that. This IDOT's opinion on this may have been different, that, well, we'd have to go to each and every one of these and have a taking, which they did on the other section, I think, of 30 on the Boulder Hill side, but maybe they didn't. But at any rate, that would be a much more difficult process for them, so I think, I was glancing at this letter that you put here, so I, I think it's important that we highlight that in that letter.
Yeah, I, I think we want to be strong in that position. If that's, if the board agrees with that, then I think we want to make our position, you know, clearly known to the department so that they can change direction a little bit.
Because if this ends up on paper, and they finish their, is it Phase One they're in?
Then that's the guide for the Phase Two design, and they may not fund Phase Two design for some time, but when they do, they'll just take that as a blueprint and move forward with it, and we won't have much chance to change it. So this is the time, if we're going to have any chance to change it, we need to speak up now.
What are the odds they're going to listen to you?
Well, I, I think they're-
Down here, they, they, like you say, it's going to be 10, 12 years from now on this, but they didn't, you know, they kind of skipped over, and they brought back Railroad Street, and it was like, oh, this is what it was in Phase One, you know, 20 years ago, and I'm like, what do you mean? It's just, if they're going to listen to this, and like you say, and put it Phase One, do we have to respond between now and, or is this going to be it, Phase One?
Well, I, I don't know if we can say it's absolute, but my strong recommendation is that we speak up now in a firm manner and use all of our resources to get this section in place, because the longer it goes, the more difficult it is to make the change. So I think, you know, they're not that far along right now, this is the time, you know, just, it was just announced in July, you know, this is a good timing from us, I think, and we get our comments. I think the letter needs to come from the village president and, you know, have the endorsement of the village board to carry the weight that is needed to, to move it forward.
Okay. Any other questions on the issue, Stan?
Just a comment, the bike path and the sidewalk will be very, very popular. I'm hoping we can keep that in the plan.
Right, no, I, I think they heard that part of it, which is encouraging, so, you know, I think there are elements here that are certainly responsive to the community, but again, and this is more of a, maybe a, just a difference of opinion from what we see versus what an outsider sees and, you know, coming in, looking at the community.
What do you see as a timeframe for this portion happening?
Well, the Phase Ones generally take anywhere from 18 to 24 months, and we're probably, I don't know, maybe nine months into the process. Most of the first part of the Phase One is information gathering, and then they proceed through. Once the Phase One is approved, then they will have to wait to get funding for Phase Two, which would be the final design. I don't believe that Phase Two has been funded, and then finally, you wait for Phase Three funding, which is construction. So they can wait, you know, a fairly long period of time before they're available. What I think, though, is important is, once you have a Phase One, then you have a major hurdle accomplished, and you would be able to build the roadway in phases. So if you knew that there was one section that was a particular impediment, let, let's take like the Orchard 30 intersection. If you got funding for just that intersection in the bridge, you could build that without building the entire Adlanes project, but if you don't have a Phase One, you can't do that. So that's the importance of having the Phase One. You can always break it into smaller pieces for Phase Two design and Phase Three construction, but having the Phase One complete for the corridor is huge.
Do you see this being completed and constructed anytime, say, the six, next six or seven years?
You know, my crystal balls is not that good, and it, it all comes down to state funding and federal funding and the, you know, the, the transportation bill and whether it gets reauthorized and how much money Illinois gets, and, you know, where they want to put their money. Oftentimes, these projects are driven by traffic and congestion, so if we have long wait times at the intersection and have accidents and those things, that helps to drive, you know, the need for construction of improvements, that's just the sad reality of, of how the system operates.
I think we've shown we have both of those. We have, we have the accidents, unfortunately, and also we have some, some pretty significant traffic, so. Thank you.
Unless I'm hearing something incorrectly, I think the consensus would be then to send this letter and follow up with the letter as well.
Task will then be to develop a letter for the mayor's signature and get that ready.
Thank you. Moving on, department updates. I'll start with Jeff. Chief Myers?
Thank you, good evening. We had a police commission meeting on Saturday discussing our current top three candidates. We have permission in the budget to hire in September. We will be sending two out of those three to a psychological exam within the next 10 days to get ready for that hire. The third applicant will be on hold until we get the results of those first two. We had a very successful Montgomery Fest. I know we did have an incident Saturday night, but it was well-maintained control by Detective Sergeant Reisdorf, Sergeant Diaz, and several police officers, so it was safe, and although a little chaotic for a minute because they were running back to the bus, nobody got hurt, there was a little property damage, but it ended well, so, thank you.
I want to thank Officer Johnson, who was at the end of the bridge by himself, and had 50 of them running at him, and he took five of them down on this concrete, and he just took complete charge of the whole, he had a lot of adults just didn't know what to do, and he took complete charge of those five kids, which were the ringleaders that were flashing gang signs and that, and he did a, he come flying out of nowhere in an unmarked car, and he just did a tremendous job of getting control just like that, and we got him on the bus, and that was it. But it was, it was, without him, you'd have had more of a problem.
Thank you, we will pass that along tomorrow.
I would agree with that. I was over at that intersection when they all started running through, and I don't know where Sullivan and Randy Johnson came from, they were over by the Village Hall. They just magically appeared and corralled the guys that were headed down towards Village Hall, and what could have gotten out of hand never, never had a chance to get out of hand, so I, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Poubens?
Thank you, Manager Zofel. A few items tonight, the first one is Boulder Hill Water Main update, and if you can-
Oh yeah, hold on.
That's your cue, that's your cue. All right. Put together a kind of a rough map, this is one of the sheets out of the construction plans, but you'll see, this is the area that we find is contract, it's currently under construction. The areas highlighted in the blue have been installed as of yesterday. That amounts to 6,200 feet of water main, which is half of our total. We've got water main installed, installed on Guilford Road, Cudores Road, Wesley Court, Culver Road, Brighton Court, and about 80% of Circle Drive West are just going to make the connection there at Old Post pretty soon. 4,200 feet of water main that have been pressure tested, and that's the area that's surrounded by the squiggly line, by the cloud. We're doing bacteriological samples right now, which is where they chlorinate, and they have to wait several days and then get two passing samples. Once that work is done, they'll start to switch over the service connections from the old water main to the new water main. When we do that, residents in that area will be out of water for a few hours, but we do notify them in advance and give them a chance to collect water if they need it, and keep the numbers, transfers to a workable number where we don't, you know, when we end the day, everybody's back on. So after working with the contractor, we're going to approach this in sections, so basically, again, that area up in the upper left corner is going to be chlorinated, and they'll start working on the service connections there. Then they'll move and do pressure testing and chlorination service connections, probably in the Circle Drive Field Point area. At the same time, we'll start to bring contractors in to start cleaning up and patching pavement in that first section, rather than waiting for all the water main to come in and then going back and doing all the restoration, so. I did put one note down on the bottom, the horizontal directional drilling, that's the rear yard, water main connections that allow us to loop those four streets, Ashlawn to Seabold and Barclay to Field Crest, those started this week. The first one, Barclay to Field Crest, will probably be done tomorrow, and then we'll move over and do the other one. One note to remember, the, we've been working with the Park District, and the water main on Ashlawn will not go in until after Labor Day. Let's try to help, help them accommodate their swimming pool crowd, and it's tight parking over there anyway. So we've worked together very well with them on getting some easements, and it shouldn't put us off our schedule in any way, so. One last note, we've had some tree removal on this, we've got about 65% of the trees removed. You may remember, we are offering replacement trees to be put on private property, so that program has gone very well. I don't have a number for how many people have accepted that, but I would say the great majority of people have taken us up on that offer, so we're getting a lot of trees planted here and getting a lot of trees taken down, so. Things are moving along very well out there, the weather's been great, and digging conditions have been great, and everything's been great, so. But eight more weeks of great, and we'll have this baby wrapped up. So any, I'd answer any questions on that before I go on. All right. You see our pavement striping company will be out, they've started yesterday, so you're going to see them doing some handwork this week, stop bars, arrows, turn lane markings, that type of thing, and they'll be doing the truck work later. So again, you'll see them out and about throughout the community. Douglas Road resurfacing from Montgomery Road North to Melrose, if you go up that way, that is now complete. There is some minor restoration to be done, some turf repair, but the pavement is down, all the pavement markings are down, so it turned out very nicely, if you have a chance to drive through there. And that was funded through the Council of Mayors Program, which we've been, had a pretty good success with over the years. Excuse me, I gotta get the contacts for better glasses, I don't know. Our MFT program is moving along, so right now we're concentrating on the three street resurfacing, that'd be Lebanon, Hamlet Circle, and River Bend. The pavement milling is completed, most of the concrete work is done, so we're working with the contractor to get them back in to start putting down asphalt. And last thing I have is, not this Friday, but a week from Friday, the Council of Mayors, King Kendall Council of Mayors is taking requests for STP program, Surface Transportation Program, that's federal funding for roads and highways. So we're preparing applications for three pieces of pavement in Montgomery. That'd be Briar Clo, Briar Cliff Road resurfacing, Ocket Road resurfacing, and then Gordon Road completion, basically, to extend it from its terminus now on the south end down to Galena Road. So at the next board meeting, there will be resolutions of support that we'll ask the board to pass and that we'll need to submit with those. So again, similar to the question as to when will Route 30 be built, when will these be adopted and built, it's hard to say, there's a lot of competition for that money, but our goal at this point is to get them into a multi-year program, get them reviewed and accepted, disqualified for the funding, and get them into a multi-year, and then we can start working on moving them up. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So that means everything will be done in the next four years, then?
Between you and me, three, but no.
That's fine, I can handle that, including Route 30.
Including Route 30.
I did think of something else, I was going to say no further update, but then Mike reminded me that I wanted to say that although we did not receive the Kane County Riverboat Grants for the application on trees we received, we were notified that the Conservation Foundation did receive a Kane County Riverboat Grant for a project of which they had designated Montgomery as one of the areas that they wanted to target and include, and the program basically includes basin education for various residents and public, it's basically a public outreach grant, so as part of that, we'll be sitting down with them, and we had sent a letter to support their application that we, they would be looking at talking to us about potentially reaching out to our HOAs or other neighborhood groups that might be interested in this type of public outreach for settings for their education. So that is something that we will be doing in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are our updates. Excellent. Is there any new or unfinished business today?
I'd like to ask Mike.
Yes, sir.
Can you replace that curb just east of Anderson's farm that goes into Montgomery Market?
That was part of the Meyer paving road repair project. Still needs, I think, restoration behind it.
Why aren't you gonna haul all that gravel and crap behind the curb? And that looks like tech.
It doesn't look good yet. It's been there a long time. We're trying to get them, it's been a little frustrating with them. They came in and knocked out a lot of work quickly, and then they've left to do some other work.
That's the way, that shouldn't even be behind there.
Part of the issue, I agree with you. Part of the issue was because that's on Montgomery Road, we needed to have a Kane County permit to do the excavation. They came out one day before the permit was acquired, started tearing things out. So my job at that point is to get them off the road. Our, our goal is to cooperate with Kane County and to get that work. But I agree with you, sir, that, that should have been all the way that day. And we'll take, we'll get that taken care of. We can even go out and get our people to grab it. It's not that much.
Okay.
I do have one item, President Brody, if it's.
Yeah.
In regards to the motor fuel tax program, we are doing River Bend Road. And we've received several phone calls and some emails regarding sidewalk ramps. We, we removed two ramps that are kind of on the, it used to be the west end or south end of Briar Cliff or River Bend, depending how you look at, it's where the cul-de-sac comes across. We've had several calls asking for us to put them back in. The, the reason they had to come out was ADA requirements. And per federal standard, whenever you resurface a road, it's considered an alteration of the road. And whenever you do a roadway alteration, you have to either, if you have ramps, they have to be constructed to the ADA standard, which is a maximum 8% slope. The problem we have there is that the slope of those sidewalks is closer to 20%. Now, it's physically possible to go back far enough on the sidewalk to get that down to 8%, but we think it would cost us in excess of $5,000 to do it. Considering that there is a passable route, you just have to walk up and around the cul-de-sac, which is inconvenient, but not too much extra distance, we made the decision not to replace them. So if anyone gets questioned, you can direct them towards me. But the short rule is that they would not comply with ADA standards. So rather than reinstall substandard ADA ramps, we took them out.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On Route 30, at least westbound, if not eastbound, there's a pretty sizable bump now. I would say 6 to 8 inches. I think it might be enough now to begin to think of it as a safety issue. Since that's a state road, is there a process for requesting that they look at it for us?
We would generally start by contacting the local maintenance yard to see if they are, have any plans to do it. Where's the, where's that at?
I can, I, I'll watch my mileage maybe this evening and it's.
West of Orchard?
It's west of Orchard, it's east of Foxmore. It's a significant bump. It's one of those, I think, where the road is beginning to fold in on itself. And I, if you were on a motorcycle or in an ambulance, it would be a significant disruption.
We'll find the, look, get a better location and report that tied up and report back.
Excellent.
I had asked about the process for the stop sign at Maple Ridge and Hickory Ridge. I haven't heard anything back about the process.
Apologize for not getting back to you. Actually, Engineer Wallers and I drove through that site. I've driven through it several times. Our process is we've developed a worksheet for, again, from IDOT standards for warrants for stop signs. And as many of you recall, we've had lots of discussions on stop signs and when they're appropriate to install. One of the concerns is you can drive through many communities that have over-applied stop signs. So Pete and I have driven through it without the form in hand, just to look at the site. And we will, our, our intent is to go through the process. The traffic count appears to be extremely low in that area, which generally, in my opinion, means it will not meet warrants. But we'll go through the process and find out. And we can contact the residents and, and get a little more detail on, on what the concern is.
Okay. Yeah, it was safety because it formerly was not a through street. It became one. And it's an uncontrolled intersection for all directions now. And there's a lot of children. That was her concern during National.
Yeah, we had marked that, the crosswalks at that intersection several years ago for that very reason, because there was a little more traffic on, on that route, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for two items. One to discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C2. And then also to discuss litigation, which is filed and pending pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C11.
So moved.
Moved by Youngerman? Second. Second by Heinz. Take your role, please.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Bond?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Lee?
Yes.
Trusty Heinz?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trusty Heinz.
Second.
Second by Trusty Bond. Take your role, please.
Trusty Heinz?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Bond?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Lee?
Yep. And we're adjourned. Thank you.